Hello and welcome back to my ongoing coverage of the Ocean Gate Titan Submersible Tragedy. This video covers the testimony of Fred Hagan, a former Ocean Gate mission specialist, who was a passenger on two of Titan's dives, both in 2021 and 22. This is the second mission specialist we've heard from, the first being Renata Rojas, and so I was expecting a fairly similar account and level of information this time around, though I could not have been more wrong. In a stark contrast to the most recent testimony we covered, that of scientific director Stephen Ross, who appeared very reserved and unwilling to say more than he needed to, Mr. Hagan instead seems completely open in both his posture and also what he had to say, and that, as it turns out, was quite a bit. This time around, we are treated to a much more in-depth account of a dive in Titan, as well as numerous problems that occurred. One huge incident was when, as we have previously heard about, the front titanium dome of the Titan vessel fell off. Mr. Hagan, in his testimony, explains how this happened and describes the moments prior when the sub was being maneuvered on its support ship. As I said, most of us who have been following this investigation know about that incident, but I myself did not fully understand the contributing factors until now, with Mr. Hagan explaining how certain decisions and factors played a part and why those decisions were implemented, such as when he talks about the bolts that secured the dome to the vessel. I know I said in a previous video that day three of the hearing was a day of legal representation, and I think, had Mr. Hagan had a lawyer present himself, there would have been a few objections raised. But, as it turned out, that was not to be the case, and so the amount of nonstop insight provided in this testimony really was a surprise, and a very enlightening one. I got much more out of it than I first anticipated, and, as far as witnesses go in terms of being a passenger aboard Titan, I think this is the best that we'll get, and the most insightful. I will leave specific details until the end of the video, when I'll be back again to comment on this testimony, as I think it's always best to see it fresh first. So, as ever, thank you very much for clicking on this video. I do want to mention just quickly, though I promise it will be likely the only time that I do, and in future it will simply be a link in the description and maybe a note in the end credits, that this channel now has a Patreon account. I want to stress, though, that the views and subscribers that the channel has gained have truly blown my mind, and I cannot thank you all enough. Each view and like truly helps more than you know, and is a huge support. And I'm really bad at this, as I've never had a Patreon account before, and I don't want it to seem like I'm begging or something like that, and again, I want to stress that simply watching a video of mine and hitting that like button are both massive ways to support my channel, and I would not expect more from anyone. The Patreon is just there for anyone who would like to support the channel further and gain a few extra perks, all of which can be found on my Patreon page. There will be a link in the description. But anyway, thank you for sitting through that, and apologies for my rambling, so let's get into this testimony and hear about the experiences of an Ocean Gate mission specialist.
Good morning, Mr. Hagan.
Good morning.
Thank you for being here with us this morning. As we ask you questions, if you need a break, please let us know. All of my questions are related to your background and your experience with Ocean Gate as a mission specialist. Could you explain your background and work history before you became involved with Ocean Gate?
My background is a commercial building contractor and developer, and I specialize in hospitals, build a number of museums, we do multifamily housing, so I have a background in construction. I did not have a specific background in the deep diving world. I have had a background in searching for missing aircraft and archaeological projects. So, I've spent years, found eight missing World War II airplanes, returned the remains of eighteen airmen for burial, and also excavated a Roman shipwreck on the Adriatic coast. So, I have had some experience underwater, and I am a diver, but I'm certainly not a professional mariner.
How did you become a mission specialist with Ocean Gate?
I became a mission specialist because I found... It's a convoluted story, but I'll try to give you the Reader's Digest version. I located two corsairs in Lake Sebago that had been sold to Great Britain through Lend-Lease, and as we all know, the Royal Navy never relinquished this title to their materiel, and it occurred to me that the Royal Navy had, so I attempted to salvage them. Being as the bodies of the British pilots were still on board, I was prevented by Great Britain. But during that endeavor, I met a lawyer named Dave Concanon, who happened to be a lawyer assisting Ocean Gate, and he had dove numerous times on the Titanic, had been involved in a number of missions. And when I heard that Ocean Gate was going to descend for the first time in 2021, I approached Dave and told him that I wanted to be on the first mission.
In your opinion, how would you define a mission specialist?
A mission specialist is an individual who is paying to participate in the great adventure of exploring the deep. And a mission specialist is not necessarily qualified in any particular way for that mission, other than needing to help to fund exploration in the ocean.
So, to confirm, to become a mission specialist, did you pay Ocean Gate any money?
I did.
And at the time, what was your understanding, or what were you told your payment was for?
Well, I don't remember what I was told, but I remember what I asked. I wanted to be on the first dive to the Titanic, in the Titan.
As a mission specialist, were you part of the submersible crew, or were you a passenger?
Well, both. I was a passenger who was given the latitude to participate in the mission, and I did so. In my case, in my background, I have quite a lot of experience building things, obviously, and I'm mechanically inclined, so I was able to assist. I didn't do any of the, what I would say, critical items, but certainly Titan bolts on the dome and other things that I would qualify as, what we would say in the slang version, monkey work.
Lieutenant Steele, could you pull up Exhibit 029? It's the project execution plan. Were you involved in any of those tasks that are in bulleted form in front of you?
Well, they certainly did not want me communicating, so I didn't do that. I wasn't tracking. The menial tasks, cleaning inside and outside the sub, helping with the oil-filled housings, and other tasks is deemed appropriate.
Did you receive any training from Ocean Gate for these tasks?
I was always working with someone from Ocean Gate, so I was working at their express direction. I didn't receive outside training, it was more onsite training and guidance, but like I said, they were very menial tasks.
If you could pull up Coast Guard Exhibit 009, the mission specialist job description. Mr. Hagan, are you familiar with this document, or were you provided a similar document?
Yes, I reckon... I don't know if it's the same document, but I recognize the verbiage.
Were you asked about your color vision or your hearing prior to going onboard with Ocean Gate?
Yes.
And were you given a duty during an emergency while onboard?
I have no recollection of that.
As a mission specialist, were you involved in any of the following assigned duties? Submersible navigation, data logging, media collection, surface communications, or a safety watch?
Safety watch and data collection.
Can you please explain what you did during those times with those duties?
Well, data collection was... I was giving a list of things to track during our descent by the scientist who was onboard, and off the top of my head, I don't recall what they were, but I was making notations about the experience and trying to fill in the blanks as they were given to me. The safety watch was just something I think everyone shared, and just, especially when we were towing the submersible, you know, someone had to keep an eye on it to make sure that nothing went awry, so we, everyone, took a turn.
Were you ever asked about physical limitations or overall health prior to your duties as a mission specialist?
Yes, I believe I was.
How many dives did you participate on with Ocean Gate?
Two dives where we actually descended.
My next questions are related to the Titan expedition in 2021. According to the dive logs provided by Ocean Gate, you were onboard a dive on July 3, 2021, that made it to seventeen hundred meters. The dive logs stated the sub lost starboard thrusters. Are you familiar with this dive?
Yeah, I thought it was on July 2, but I'm getting old, so... Go ahead. Yeah, I was on the dive.
And were you involved in any of the planning meetings for that dive?
Of course.
Can you please walk us through what a planning meeting looked like?
Well, with Ocean Gate, there was a plethora of planning meetings, so you're always either in a meeting, or coming out of one, or getting ready for one. So, we would have morning meetings and evening meetings, but the planning meeting, we would go through in sequence, you know, every ten or fifteen minutes of the pre-launch schedule, and then what would happen while we were down, and then going through a checklist of, making sure that everyone had checked each component and signed off, and that was the nature of the meeting.
And were you assigned any tasks for this specific dive?
I was just given a sheet of data by the scientist, and was... I don't think I was given a specific task, but they basically accepted me as a member of their team, and we were all basically together enjoying the experience and making sure that it went smoothly. And it wasn't... They weren't supposed to take mission specialists on this dive, because there'd been an incident a couple of days before, but I had prevailed upon Stockton, or I reminded him that my intent was to be on the first descent, so that's why I was onboard.
You just mentioned a previous incident. Can you go into detail what you understood happened? Or were you present for that incident?
I was present.
Can you please talk about that incident?
Well, we attempted to launch the Titan, and we experienced some issues, and when they were pulling it back up onto the deck, I believe what happened was that, you know, it came up, and the crane was pulling it up the ramp, and it got to a point where it was sea-sawling. You know, there's the flat plane of the deck, and then there's the angled plane of the ramp, which is fairly steep, probably a little too steep. But again, this was all experimental, and we were feeling our way through it. So, it was teetering back and forth, and then the crane operator let it go a little bit too abruptly, and it slammed down on the deck with quite a bit of force. Now, the complicating factor was that a decision had been made to only install four of the eighteen bolts in the thirty-five-hundred-pound titanium dome. And that decision was made. I was there when the decision was made. I was not... I did not articulate any opinions one way or the other. But the thought was that, once the ship went, or the Titan went to depth, that the pressure would be so intense that you didn't need any bolts, you wouldn't be able to pry it off with a jack. So, they were trying to minimize the time it took to get the mission specialist out of the Titan after the mission ended. And that decision was made. The problem was, no one anticipated that the platform was going to be dropped with such force. And you're also in the North Atlantic, so the ship's going up and down. There's a lot of factors that combine together. The force of the platform hitting the deck of the... Was that the Horizon Arctic that you're...? Yeah. The Horizon Arctic, it just basically sheared off several bolts, and they shot off like bullets, and as you know, the titanium dome fell off.
Yes, thank you. Did you witness, or did you notice any damage to the forward dome?
No, there was no visible damage. It was obviously a very robust structure. It was just the connecting points that severed.
Can you explain why you were allowed to dive when there weren't supposed to be any mission specialists onboard?
Well, when I say no one was supposed to... The original mandate was that, okay, we've had an incident, we're going to go down and not take any mission specialists. It wasn't like some legal reality, because this was all operating in an experimental environment. I reminded Stockton that it was my intent to be on the first dive, and that I was comfortable getting in and was willing to accept that risk.
Going back to the dive on July 3, or around July 3, 2021, can you tell me about this dive and why the dive was aborted?
Yes, I can, and you want me to do so, obviously. Yes, we went down, it was P.H., Nargile, Stockton, Scott Griffith, and myself. So, we were launched, and we basically blew the air tanks and went down thirty meters, floated the Titan, and we began a descent. Now, you have to remember, this is literally the first descent to depth, you know, other than practice descents in other locales. So, we realized very early on that we had weighted the Titan slightly off balance, and the original intent was to go down nose-forward, and kind of go down on a long gradual angle. And we had unfortunately weighted it ass-heavy, so it began spiraling. So, instead of going down on a gradient, we were going through a very... It wasn't a violent spiral, it was a very slow spiral through the ocean. And we descended through the shades of light until we entered a world of utter darkness, a complete absence of light, as you're aware. And during that descent, we would see various phosphorescent creatures in the inky blackness, and all systems were off, except, you know, basically a couple LED lights and the little laptop that they were using to send text messages to the surface. So, we basically free-fell, I believe it was for two, two-and-a-half hours. I don't recall the exact timeline, but it was a few hours. And because we were spiraling slowly through the void, we were off course, and we were caught in the currents, and we were in this kind of unusual attitude. So, when we were approaching the bottom of the seabed, we received a text message, and again, communications were very erratic. We would lose comms, which was not unusual, because of the different climatic zones in the ocean, it was hard to get signals, but it would come in and out. But we received a text message that we were off course. So, at that juncture, we were all discussing all these things together jointly. We decided to throw the thrusters on and correct our course and make our way towards what we believed was the bow. Now, you have to remember that the Titan only has a sonar that can go out about a hundred yards. So, when you're at the bottom, you're basically operating in the blind until you actually get within a hundred yards of anything. So, you could actually go down and completely miss the Titanic, because it's such a vast area. But we were given a heading by the mothership, and we then threw on the port thruster, and when we fired the starboard thruster, it failed to activate. And as everyone in this board, I'm sure, is well aware, electronics, saltwater, and extremely intense pressure, they're just not always compatible... Well, they're not compatible at all. So, the starboard thruster failed, and we realized that all we could do was spin around in circles, like making right turns. At this juncture, we... Well, obviously, we weren't going to be able to navigate to the Titanic. So, the decision was made to jettison our weights, and if I... And there were a number of weights. There were the sandbags that were attached, there were also the pipe weights. And the pipe weights were released mechanically by rocking the Titan back and forth. And we dropped, I believe, three of the four. The fourth one got stuck, so we couldn't get it off. So, it took us probably twenty minutes before we actually saw a perceptible rate of ascent, other than maybe just a couple feet. And then we began ascending, and again, these are just very approximate timelines, because I don't exactly remember, but I think it was three hours, three-and-a-half hours to come up to the surface, but it was quite a while. But we came up... No, we weren't making much time, so we left the port thruster on, and then we began making long spiraling turns, or just long turns to the right during the ascent. So, I think we did speed up, and I don't remember how long it was. It seemed like a long time. But we got up and got back on the platform, and they filled the tanks, we came up, and then we had to tow it back to St. John for repairs. And the decision was made by Stockton not to put it back on the ship because of the damage that had been sustained on the previous time to take it on deck. So, the decision was made to tow it at about five to eight knots.
Since you paid to go to the Titanic, did you get reimbursed since you didn't make it to the Titanic?
No, I did not. I don't believe there was any provision to be reimbursed, but Stockton made it clear that if you did not get to the Titanic, you would get another opportunity. And eventually, and I can't say I was overjoyed that I went that year and didn't get to the Titanic, but as it turned out, you know, went back to next year, so I had two expeditions basically for the price of one. And you have to remember that this was all in the service of an experimental vessel. Titan, or Stockton, was not necessarily fascinated by the Titanic. What he was trying to do was create a paradigm where he could take people and resources into the abyss, and the Titanic served as this iconic destination that people would pay to go to and help him perfect his technology. I mean, that's really what this was about. Did I answer your question?
You did, thank you. Moving to the Titanic expedition in 2022, according to the dive logs provided by Ocean Gate, you completed a successful Titanic wreck site dive on the Titan on July 15, 2022, which we labeled as Dive 80. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Upon surfacing on Dive 80, a loud bang was heard. Do you recall witnessing that?
Do I recall hearing it?
Yes.
Yes, certainly.
Can you please describe what you heard?
Well, we were ascending, and I don't recall the depth. I think we were fairly close to the surface, but we were still underwater, and there was a large bang or cracking sound. And of course, you know, sonic events in a submersible are alarming, so we were all concerned that maybe there was a crack in the hull. But it turned out, upon inspection after we got on the ship, that the body of the fuselage of the Titan had just jumped in its carriage. So, there was no damage.
Did anyone check the real-time monitoring system screen inside the submersible to see if there was any indication by the system that something went wrong?
Of course.
And do you remember witnessing, or was there anything that showed that something went wrong inside?
No, not that I know of. I mean, no one read any data that caused them concern. We were all concerned by the sonic event, but we didn't detect anything on the monitor.
During the debrief, was this loud bang discussed by any Ocean Gate employees?
It must have been, but I really don't recall. We went out and looked to see what had happened, and I think we determined what had happened. I'm sure it was, but I don't remember discussing it.
Prior to what you were told for the reason for the loud bang, were there any discussions about the possibilities for the loud bang?
Well, yeah, obviously, the concern was that maybe the hull had cracked.
Do you know what investigation was done into the cause of the bang? What specifically was looked at?
Well, we physically determined that the fuselage had jumped in the carriage, so that was the logical inference, and there was no sign. I believe at some point, I was not present for the inspection, but I believe the fairings were removed and the hull was inspected. But we had already satisfied... Well, we had determined to reasonable degree of satisfaction that the hull had jumped in the carriage.
And did anyone ever present to you the real-time monitoring system data that was taken off afterwards?
No, and in fairness to Ocean Gate, I wouldn't have had any clue what I was looking at, anyway.
At the time, did you have concerns about the noise?
Well, yeah, you're in a submersible, and there's a loud bang. You would have to be brain-dead not to be somewhat concerned.
When they told you what the reason was, were your concerns... Were you no longer concerned?
I was satisfied by the explanation.
Do you know if anybody else onboard voiced concerns about the noise you heard?
Onboard the Titan?
The Titan, or the Horizon Arctic, or any Ocean Gate employees?
Oh, I remember, it was widely discussed, and there were... Yeah, so there was a level of concern. I wasn't all that concerned myself. I mean, I had finished my dive, so I wasn't really that focused on it. So, I apologize, I probably wasn't paying that much attention.
Would you have felt safe going down to depth again after that loud bang?
Well, that's an interesting question. There... I mean, anyone that felt safe going to depths in the Titan was deluded or delusional. I mean, it was an experimental vessel, it was clear that it was dangerous. And anyone that wanted to go was either... And it was either delusional if they thought it wasn't dangerous, or they were just embracing the sense of risk. I mean, it's kind of like jumping out of an airplane. I mean, you don't do it because it's safe, you do it because it's an adrenaline rush. And, yeah, I would have gone back down again. I mean, we weren't going down in search of safety, we were going down in search of adventure and exploration.
What was your overall impression of the safety culture at Ocean Gate?
The way I would describe... Well, Stockton Rush was a very interesting individual, and he was a brilliant man, he was an inventor, was an aeronautical engineer, had flown experimental airplanes, built an experimental submersible. So, this was a man who was engaged in high-risk endeavors and was comfortable with a level of risk that most people would not tolerate. At the same time, Stockton made a very conscious and astute effort to maintain a perceptible culture of safety around a high-risk environment. And by that, I mean, you know, there was a very detailed set of steps taken to, you know, to onboard a dive, for instance. We had, you know, what we called anomalies, which were seemingly minor events that had no real significant bearing, but if just some little issue that popped up, if there were a certain number of anomalies, it constituted a strike, or if there was a major, something that you would consider more major impact, that could constitute a strike on its own. If you got the three strikes, they aborted the dive. Anyone on the ship, including the cook, had the ability to say that, you know, "We're boarding the dive for whatever reason they thought." So, I'm not sure how to better illuminate that reality for you, but other than to say that it was a high-risk endeavor in which a dedicated attempt was made to adhere to a culture of safety.
You used the term perception of safety, so it was your opinion that...
It wasn't a safe... This was not... It was not safe diving in the Titan, and it was never supposed to be safe. And if it was safe, then, you might as well just get in a trolley car and ride around town, but it wasn't supposed to be safe.
Good morning, Mr. Hagan.
Good morning.
How did the payments work for your dives as a mission specialist? Like, did you write a check? Who did you write the check out to? How did that work?
Well, I certainly didn't write a check. I believe... I don't remember who we sent the money to, but I received an email giving me directions on where to wire the funds. I forwarded the email to one of my secretaries, and she wired the funds. I don't remember, I don't even remember exactly how much it was, but it was wired to... And I don't remember who we wired it to. I assume it was Ocean Gate, but I honestly don't know. It wasn't... I mean, that was just an incidental thing to me. I wasn't paying that much attention.
Were you aware of a refund policy at Ocean Gate? You briefly mentioned it, but from what you were told the refund policy was?
I'm not aware of a refund policy.
Were you ever required to get a physical or a medical exam before your dives with Ocean Gate?
I was asked to get a physical.
And did you conduct the physical?
Yes.
And did you have to show them proof of that physical?
I mean, my memory's not exactly clear. I believe that I emailed them a physical report, but again, that's... I'm a little foggy, I'm getting old, y'all, excuse me.
You had stated earlier that you conducted some training with Ocean Gate members?
Yes.
Lieutenant Steele, can you pull up Coast Guard Exhibit 101? Which, this is the 2023 Mission Specialist Crew Agreement, but I just want to see if you were provided with a similar document. It states, "I understand that as a member of the expedition crew, I will need to complete substantial training prior to the start of the expedition, up to fourteen hours depending on prior maritime experience." Did you receive or conduct similar amount of time training?
Mr. Newbauer, is this a document that we've established Mr. Hagan would have seen? I believe this is 2023 Expedition Mission Agreement.
Yes, ma'am, it is. I asked if he saw a similar agreement.
Yeah, I recall that we were to receive training. Now, in terms of... You mean, training... Well, it says "prior to the start of the expedition." Now, in terms of, you, you mean training, well, it says prior to the start of the expedition. So we, we received training onsite, obviously, but, uh, prior to the start of the expedition, uh, we, we held a series of, uh, kind of like webinars or Zoom calls. And, and in 2020, uh, 2021, we, we were still under COVID protocols, especially in Canada. So these were all done remotely and, uh, you know, and I don't recall how long they were, maybe 90 minutes each, and I believe they were actually recorded. So there was a series of, of, of those type of things. They sent us a, a, a bunch of documentation that, that we did, I, I did read through. You know, I, you know, I didn't dwell on it extensively. It, it wasn't all that illuminating. It was just a bunch of boilerplate and, and, and common sense type of directives, but I, I, I did skim through it. So there, there was a level of training. I, I, I have no idea whether it constituted 14 hours.
Thank you.
So sir, just to clarify too, did you, are you saying that that, uh, agree, training agreement you just read is similar to the one you had seen previously, but you can't match it exactly?
I, it, it looks familiar.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you, sir.
Did you attend any testing of the Titan in the Bahamas?
I did not.
You stated also earlier that you were aware the Titan was an experimental submersible, but were you aware that the Titan wasn't classed or tested or registered? Was that ever brought up to you?
I was well aware of that. And there were no protocols in place, as I understand it, to test a cylindrical carbon fiber fuselage for, for deep di, ocean diving. So there, I, I don't believe there was any facility to actually test it at that level. So Stockton, and again, this is my understanding, uh, Stockton would have had to create the, the whole testing protocol in order to test his own ship.
Did he ever go over the testing protocol that he conducted with you?
Only conversationally. And, and I don't recall the exact conversation, but I, I mean, I'm certainly was aware of their pre, previous dives and, and, uh, you know, I discussed it with PH and, and Stockton at, at length. And, uh, no, no one tried to deceive me that this was a safer, easy operation. Uh, but, you know, I was comfortable lying down with them.
I'm going to kind of move to the Titanic Expedition 2021. Again, I know we briefly talked about that with Lieutenant Commander Williams. Um, as discussed, you were on that test dive to the Titanic wreck site for Dive 62 on July 3rd, 2021, the dive that only descended to 1,700 meters. When did you, when, and when did you pay to be a part of that dive?
I, I believe it was within six months of the launch date. So it was, I approached, uh, yeah, yeah, it was in the first quarter of 2021 because I approached Dave around Christmas, New Year's and told him I wanted to go and he connected me with Ocean Gate. So it would have been in the first quarter of 2021.
And what was the purpose again of that dive? It's listed as a systems test. What were they testing?
Uh, they were testing to make sure the Titan could go to depth.
Lieutenant Steele, can you pull up Coast Guard Exhibit 052? Which is the dive log and maintenance log and go to page two. And on the right, as Lieutenant Commander Williams stated, uh, it states that there was a loss of the starboard thrusters. Can you scroll down to page 14? Page 14, this is part of the maintenance log section. And if you look under Dive 62 on July 3rd, 2021, there are several, several issues listed and some are dive critical. And that was the dive you were on, correct? Dive 62 on the 3rd of July?
Yes.
Okay. I'm just going to read them for the record. It states incident, external hull HPA valve set in the wrong position for the dive. Starboard control pod failed at 1,700 meters after pop sound heard. Zero vacuum, zero temp, green water alarm. Two drop weights jammed in the starboard channel. Number one and number three acoustic sensors have extreme and unusual events. Thousands of hits with 5,000 to 6,000 levels only. All other sensors appear normal. Dome hinge retention plate bent, DVL intermittent, external lights flickering and drawing 14 amps. Pan and tilt not functional. Port battery will not turn on. Rear access camera mount broken and sub comes off the platform in a rough launch. Were you aware of all these incidents during your dive or after your dive?
Well, I had forgotten that they had an acoustic event down below, but yeah, that does ring a bell. None of them looking at it.
So I'll ask you to go into that acoustic event, but I'm going to ask Lieutenant Steele to keep this up on the screen and have you go through these from your point of view as a passenger when you're inside the submersible. Can you kind of take us through these incidents and what they look like to you from inside the submersible? You had already talked about the thrusters.
Yeah, um, well, and we, and I talked about the, the weights being jammed. We couldn't get them off. Uh, the acoustic sensors, yeah. And now, now that I'm looking at it, I, I do recall, I mean, they, they were all discussing everything that was happening in, in a group setting. Um, I didn't necessarily understand the nomenclature they were referring to, but, but I recall concerns, uh, with the acoustic sensor at depth. And the dome hinge retention plate, and I, I don't recall that. The DVL intermittent, I don't recall. The external lights flickering, yeah, I remember that. The pan and tilt, you know, we had, we had issues with that. We had issues with the battery. We had issues with the scrubber, but I think that was 2022. I don't remember the camera being broken and this, and the rough launch we talked about. Yeah, and I mean, I, I recall most of those.
Did any of that cause you any concern while you were inside the submersible at the time?
Well, there wasn't anything I could do about it. I mean, we just had to get back to the surface was, and I wasn't unduly concerned. I mean, I was, there was a level of concern. I just figured we'd sort it out and return to the surface.
How did they, the acoustic sensors and the monitoring, was there like a screen inside that they pulled up? Like, what did that look like?
I, I believe it was on a, uh, the laptop screen, but again, I, I, I didn't understand what I was looking at. So, you know, they asked me to explain what they were talking about. It was, it was all over my head. I, I knew that they were monitoring the hull, but I, I, you know, but I, I believe it was on a laptop or an iPad or something.
Yesterday, we heard witness testimony from another mission specialist. They described the hull to be very quiet on dives. Was that your experience as well?
Uh, generally.
The pop sound that's listed there on the second item, did you hear that sound?
Yeah, we, we had a couple, you know, pop, the, the one up top was, was, was the loud and alarming one. But yeah, there were a couple of noises.
And it's, just to differentiate, that was on Dive 80, but this was on Dive 62. Was there another, it says that 1,700 meters of pop sound?
I, I don't recall any, any loud sounds on, on 62, no. It was, the only loud one was on the, uh, 2022 mission.
Okay. Thank you. You can take that down, Lieutenant Steele. Thank you. Did any employees of Ocean Gate or past employees ever bring up safety concerns to you?
Safety concerns regards the operation of the Titan.
The operation or the construction of the Titan?
Well, I never personally met David Lockridge, who was the main critic, but I was aware of, of him. And I was aware of some of his, uh, concerns. I, I, I don't recall a, you know, specifically talking to Ocean Gate employees that had concerns that were expressed to me in, in any really coherent fashion. I mean, there was a general, there were always general discussions, you know, about the safety of the ship and, and making it a safer environment. But, uh, if, I think what you're asking is did somebody tell me that it, it, you know, wasn't structurally intact and, and I shouldn't get in it? And, and that never happened.
How were you made aware of the concerns from Mr. Lockridge?
I believe David Concanon, uh, filled me in on, on that reality. He knew David and he knew of the, uh, the past issues.
Can you kind of go through that conversation with Mr. Concanon about that?
I, I, I don't recall the exact context of the conversation. It was just a, a conversation about the evolution of the Titan. And I don't even remember when that conversation was. Uh, but yeah, I, I do remember talking about his concerns. And, uh, also the, you know, one, one of the elements of that discussion was that most of the concerns that were articulated by that group of people that wrote the letter, uh, that was a previous iteration of, of the Titan. And some of those concerns had been addressed in the construction of the Titan that I was on. So, you know, you have to clarify, as I'm sure you're well aware, that, that a lot of the complaints that David Lockridge had and that the, the panel had when they wrote were about the previous iteration, uh, you know, previous submersible. And some of those issues were, were tested and corrected in the construction of the Titan.
Was there ever a time you were on a dive in the Titan that you ever felt unsafe?
I, I mean, that goes back to the original mandate. I mean, it wasn't supposed to be safe. It was supposed to be a thrilling adventure. Um, so I'm, in, in a broad sense, uh, I, I didn't feel completely safe at, at any time. Uh, but I never, I never felt personally that I was, well, we, we got stuck momentarily in the Titan, in the Titanic, but with, with Stockton, but he was absolutely unflappable. And, uh, and, and I was sitting at his right shoulder and, and we, and I'd asked him to go around where the break was and, and we had, for a few moments, we had gotten stuck. And, and I said, uh, and he was very quiet and he was working at controls and, and did I say Stockton? I meant PH. And I, uh, I, I leaned over and I said, PH, it seems that we're stuck. And he says, yes, Fred, we are. And then he, then he got it out and we went on and I tried to reach the stern element. So yeah, in that moment, I don't think, you know, in fact, everyone else on the sub at that point wanted to go back to the surface. But I prevailed upon PH to making a shot for the stern, which we attempted to do until Wendy got a, concerned about what we were up to and told us to come up immediately. So I answered your question.
And can we just, for clarification, which dive was that on?
That was the 2022 dive.
Dive 80?
I'm sorry?
Dive 80 in 2022? And who was on that dive again with you? I know you just said PH was on that dive with you, but?
Well, uh, PH was on both my dives and Scott Griffith was the pilot during the freefall. And during the ascent, uh, PH took over flying in the news when we were actually at the wreck site. And I, we were accompanied by two other mission specialists, the father and son, Colin and Richard, Richard Talan out of St. John's.
Can you kind of tell us about your relationship with Mr. Rush? What was that like?
I, I really liked Stockton and had a lot of respect for him. Like I said, he was a brilliant visionary. He was an inventor. He had this idea of exploring the deep and colonizing it and, um, you know, leading humanity into the last great frontier. And, and I admired him. Um, we, we did occasionally have, uh, differences on certain things that I discussed with him. And, and for, for someone who was a risk taker, I, I got the impression he thought I was a bit of a troublemaker, not, not in a negative way, just kind of a carefree tongue in cheek individual who enjoyed the process maybe more than, than I should. But, uh, so, you know, the one year he, at the end, they gave a bunch of awards. And of course I was awarded the troublemaker award. So, um, we, we got along fairly well, but I also was well aware that there were times that I tested Stockton's patients.
With those moments that you tested as patients, were those while you were in a submersible? Or can you kind of go into that?
No, it was just, it, it was just breaking rules, you know, the standard rules on the ship.
That you were breaking rules?
Yeah, well, just, you know, yes.
And when you say the ship, are you talking the support vessel or the Titan?
The support vessel.
First, going back to the incident involving the dome, sir. Did, were, did you observe the incident as the dome fell off?
Yes, I did.
Do you recall which side of the dome was on the deck of the vessel?
The outside.
And did the dome slide down the ramp?
A short distance and I got stuck. I actually have a picture of it on my phone.
Uh, yes, sir. I'd like to, uh, get that after the proceedings if you, to the board, if you don't mind.
Sure.
And the picture you have, is it of the dome stuck on the ramp?
Yes, I was on deck, uh, you know, I was on, on board when it blew off. But then afterwards I got out in the, uh, you know, the little Zodiac and I took a picture from the Zodiac and it's right, looking right up the ramp. And you see the dome laying on the ramp.
And sir, just to clarify, it was, when, I think you said face down. Is that, it was on the, it wasn't on the ring side, but on the front of the dome?
It was the exterior of the dome. Yeah, it fell off, fell forward and it bounced and got stuck. I mean, it weighed 3,500 pounds. It, it wasn't easy to move, so.
Yes, sir.
It didn't flop around.
How did they recover that? Do you remember?
I believe they, well, they had a crane onboard, so they, they, they basically rigged it and lifted it up and, and, and reset it. And then that's why the next dive was supposed to be a, you know, basically a, a test to make sure that everything worked and I insisted on going.
Who made the initial call that you shouldn't, as a mission specialist, be part of that dive?
Well, Stockton, I, I think made a very logical decision that, that they should do it with their inner team. And, you know, and PH wasn't going to be left out of that and, and Scott was the co-pilot. So that was the, the team that was going to descend. And I prevailed upon him to let me participate.
In your opinion, was Mr. Rush the final authority for safety issues?
In my opinion, yes.
Did you ever have a discussion about the US Coast Guard with Mr. Rush?
Uh, probably, but I don't recall. I mean, the Canadian Coast Guard stormed aboard the ship in 2021, armed with AR-14s, body armor and sidearms. And I, I still don't understand what they were after, maybe to check and see if we were wearing our mask or something, but, uh, I have no idea what they were doing or, or why they were heavily armed with body armor. But they, four of them came ashore when, when we returned from the mission where we lost our thruster. I mean, came onboard, but that was the Canadians. Uh, I, I'm sure he talked about the US Coast Guard, but, and I'm, and I'm sure it'd be very entertaining if I remember what he said, but I don't remember.
And sir, to clarify the record, for the record, are, are you familiar with the Canadian maritime structure? Are you sure that was a Canadian Coast Guard?
No, I'm not familiar with their structure, but I would assume that if they had body armor and AR-15s, they were a fairly significant element.
Sir, just for the record, the Canadian Coast Guard is a civilian, uh, force that is just search and rescue and so that it's probably another Canadian authority.
Uh, it very well may be. I, whoever came on and I thought it was the Coast Guard, they were heavily armed, which was startling. I, I don't think that has any bearing on this hearing. I just mentioned it in passing. I, I thought it was the Coast Guard.
Uh, sir, going back to Dive 80, you, you mentioned that the Titan was entangled for a short period of time. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Do you remember what the Titan was entangled with?
For my own reasons, I wanted to investigate, you know, the ship broke in half. And, and normally everybody wants to see the iconic bow shot or the, you know, the recognizable components, uh, which I wanted to see as well. And we, we kind of descended a little bit into the grand staircase because the skylight was gone. And so we, we saw the normal iconic sites and I wanted to investigate, uh, the area of the rupture. And, uh, and I asked PH to get back there. Of course, there's a lot of current swirling around and, and, and we briefly got stuck. It probably, it was just like pipes and things and, and PH very quickly, um, I, I, when I say stuck, we weren't stuck. I doubt if it was more than a minute or two. And we, and I, and I, we, we were definitely stuck, yeah.
Just to clarify, the Titan was entangled with the wreckage of the Titanic. Would that be accurate?
Yes.
Do you remember what part of the Titan was, was entangled?
I, I think we just snagged the, you know, one of the skids on, on, on some pipe or something. I, I don't think it was, it, it was that big of a deal, but yeah, we were, I mean, obviously when you're down there, it, it feels like a big deal. I think, I don't, PH certainly wasn't overly concerned and he, he very quickly piloted, piloted the, uh, the Titan away from, and, and, you know, released it.
Uh, Mr. Hagan, just had one follow-up question before we go to the NTSB. In regard to the, the incident on the, with the Titanic, was that reported to topside? To the Horizon Arctic?
You mean when we got stuck?
Yes, sir.
I, I mean, I, I may be overblowing the whole experience. I mean, we were, we had a skid stuck for a minute, maybe. It wasn't, it wasn't a big deal and I, I, I'm sure it was discussed. I don't remember.
Was there a discussion af, after the mission was over, topside?
I don't remember.
Do you hold a, uh, merchant mariner's credential from the United States or any other country?
I do not. You said mariner credentials?
Yes, sir.
No, I don't.
When you entered Canada, did you enter as a tourist or as a seafarer?
In 2021, I entered as a mission specialist.
Were you instructed to tell customs or immigration on, on your role, on the, on what you, what you were doing there? Either as a tourist or some other function?
Yeah, well, I was told to tell them that I was participating in the mission and that I was a, a member of the team that was going to go down on the submersible, which, which was correct. I mean, I was also a paying, uh, mission specialist or, as you say, a tourist. I, I, I did not use the word tourist to the Canadians because I did not think it would be conducive to them allowing me to enter the country, especially with their onerous and anal interpretation of COVID protocols.
During the, um,
During the visit, or as you said, when they stormed aboard in 2021, was that, do you know, was that when you came back from a mission? Or were you sitting there doing training, about to go on a mission?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the first part?
The, when the Canadian authorities came onboard?
Oh, yes.
Was that, were you sitting there waiting to go on a mission? Or is that when you came?
No, no, that was when we returned and we towed the Titan back on the platform. We pulled into dock and immediately four heavily armed individuals, you know, came onboard, much to my consternation. And I initially thought they'd finally caught up to me, but it turned out it was all just some perfunctory bureaucratic snafu. I, to this day, I have no idea what they were doing.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to go to Ocean Gate for any questions, please.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hagan. Just one question. You mentioned the brief entanglement with the Titanic debris during dive 80. Was that intentional on the part of Ocean Gate?
No, it certainly wasn't intentional. It was completely my fault, nobody's fault but mine. I was egging P A. John, but it was not intentional. And it really was not a big deal. I don't want to overstate that at all.
So I just want to go back to dive 80. Who made the final determination on the cause of the loud noise that was observed when the vessel reached, the Titan reached the surface?
Scott Griffith and Stockton were the two that were actually taking responsibility to investigate that. And they jointly made that determination.
Talking about the pre-dive checks, if you'll sit there for a minute and just think of yourself back into the, in the Titan hull when you made those dives, was the process for the pre-dive checks an orderly process, as if they were following a checklist or a procedure?
Yeah, it would be similar to the checklist you'd use on an airplane. You'd just go through and mark off things. And they were also talking, you know, by radio, I believe, on the surface to people outside who were also responding, like they were checking off items on a checklist. I don't recall exactly what those items were. But yes, it did seem like an orderly process. And there was attention paid to any anomalies or incidents. And like I said, that's why out of 100 attempts, they only made 13 actual descents to the Titanic, because of the attempt to follow a protocol. And as soon as you got past their threshold of tolerance, they aborted.
During the missions that you were on, do you recall the pilot or Ocean Gate personnel inside the Titan saying that all of the real-time acoustic sensors were properly functioning as part of the pre-dive check?
I don't remember.
And then you mentioned getting stuck on the Titanic wreckage.
I'm sorry I mentioned it, but yeah.
Do you, prior to your dives, did Ocean Gate tell you, pardon me, that they had notified the Canadian or the United States Coast Guard of the mission or the expedition so that they would be in a position to assist you if something like entanglement on wreckage or some other problem occurred on the ocean bottom?
No, but I did have clear conversations with at least PH and probably others. The conversation as related to me was that there were few assets on Earth capable of getting to depth. And that if something went wrong, that, you know, we were all going to die. And, you know, and PH related that repeatedly. And that was, that was a common conversational thread, I think, onboard was that there were limited assets. They probably cannot be organized logistically and scrambled in time to save anyone if something went wrong. And, you know, that was the paradigm that we had to be comfortable with.
Did Ocean Gate ever tell you that they had notified potential contractors or other submersible operators of the expedition so that they would be ready in the event there was a problem in the vessel, the Titan was on the ocean bottom?
I don't recall that.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Hagan, I have a question about your perception of Mr. Narzalay's role at Ocean Gate, or during the, actually, the role during the excursions. Did you understand him to be an employee of Ocean Gate?
No, he was an employee of RMS Titanic, Inc.
Can you explain the process for the piloting onboard for dive 80? Like, was it either Mr. Griffiths or Mr. Narzalay?
Scott basically was in command during the freefall, which, you know, there's not a whole lot to do other than freefall. When we got near the bottom, they moved the controller into the nose. And PH, Scott was flying by referencing an onboard camera, an external camera. PH took over and did the visual flying by the wreck site. And I believe everyone was aware that PH was not an employee of Ocean Gate. He was there as a, as an expert. He was, you know, his nickname was Mr. Titanic. And he was just this warm, vital, extremely likable guy that, you know, you couldn't help but feel comfortable with regardless of who you were. And he was a wonderful addition to the team. And, but when I say he wasn't an employee, I think everyone also viewed him as an integral part of the Ocean Gate team.
And was part of that to provide kind of a narration as a guide?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, he was definitely, PH was definitely a draw. And he was such a wonderful human being that, you know, he just added, you know, the special element to any mission that you were on with him. And even onboard ship, he just, he made it a pleasure, you know, to endure even the most mundane experiences.
Mr. Hagan, would you like, do you have anything that would be valuable to the board that we have not asked you?
Yeah, if I'm done, I'll just, you know, express my thoughts briefly. I don't know if it's any value to anyone. But, you know, one of the concerns that I have is that the world at large viewed this from the outset as this disaster where somebody had to be blamed and without access to the facts. I want, first off, I want to profoundly thank this board for your attempts to deliberate what happened in a calm manner and come to the facts in hopes of preventing a recurrence. At the same time, I think my worry is that the greater tragedy than the Ocean Gate tragedy is the, if we use this event to inhibit future innovation, and if the regulations derived from this may prevent that kind of innovative approach to, you know, the undersea world, the depths of the ocean are fundamental to life. And the elements that are going to sustain us in the coming green economy need to be harvested in a sustainable fashion. So we need ways and means to access that. And the government has not currently been investing the resources to do that. So I think it's up to private enterprise to help and hopefully with the help of the government, just as the government is working with Elon Musk. And Musk is hoping to colonize space. And I'd love to go there with him. But I did go with Stockton. He was hoping to explore and colonize interspace, which is the last great frontier. So hopefully, it's a teachable moment. You know, if you know history, you know, 1934, we had the Airmail fiasco. And it was a disaster. The Army Air Corps tried to fly the Airmail with planes, open cockpit planes that only had magnetic compasses. And it was a catastrophe. But it was a teachable moment. And from that moment, the United States had a competition for manufacturers to make designs for the next generation of airplanes. And one of them was the B-17 bomber. So the only reason that we were even somewhat prepared for World War II evolved from that teachable moment. And I'd like to think that this is a teachable moment. And if, my hope is that if nothing else, the government and private enterprise team together as they have with Elon Musk in space, because interspace and the depths of the ocean are much more important in the short term than outer space. So it's critical. And I thank you all for your time. I will express, I was unhappy with the Coast Guard during the disaster. And again, as it turned out, there was nothing that could have been done. But in the moment, those of us who knew and loved the people onboard, you know, we wanted every effort made to save them. And I believe there was a reaction to this, that there had been an acoustic event and that they had been lost. And it seemed to me, from my perspective, that we should have scrambled the few assets that could have been scrambled in order to affect a rescue rather than a recovery. And I believe there was an asset in Buffalo that was not sent out. So even if there was evidence suggesting an implosion, you know, my feeling was that we should have pursued every possible avenue until we knew definitively that my friends were dead. And if for no other reason, I believe it would have been, you know, an opportunity to test those systems and to put them on site. And I don't believe that that happened. That's my only criticism. And again, I'm not blaming anyone. I just wish that had happened. But I do thank you for your inquiry. And you've been very calm and deliberative. And I appreciate your tone. And I wish you all the best. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Just for the information, for the record, we do have Coast Guard witnesses coming to testify about the search and rescue efforts next week. Mr. Hagan, thank you for your testimony. You are now released from these proceedings.
So that concludes the testimony of Fred Hagan. And I hope you found it as insightful as I. Mr. Hagan really does seem like an open book, and I was gripped hearing about his dive experiences. Like Renata Rojas, Mr. Hagan seemed quite positive about both Stockton Rush and the Ocean Gate operation, which is interesting, given that they are both mission specialists. And all other testimonies given by actual employees of the company have painted a very different picture. As I said, when I was covering Ms. Rojas's testimony, this difference could be due to the simple fact that, as mission specialists, they were a large part of the company's profit, given the amounts they paid to be there. Mr. Hagan, when speaking about his dives, was not shy in speaking about the issues with Titan, including getting stuck in the Titanic wreck for a short period, which he accepted responsibility for. There were also malfunctions, including, as he put it, when they were spiraling slowly through the void due to Titan being improperly loaded. He also cites the well-known communication problems that Titan was known for, and discussed the noises he heard, in particular, that loud bang that has been well documented. Obviously, the dome falling off Titan was a big topic that had to be covered, given that Mr. Hagan was present at the time. It was quite shocking to hear his account of the sub being lowered too quickly and the subsequent impact it had with the ship, and the way the bolts in the dome were sheared off, the bolts of which there were only four, said to have been reduced to cut down on the time it took to get passengers out of the vessel. When asked about the fact that Titan was an experimental sub, like Ms. Rojas, Mr. Hagan states that he was aware that it was risky. Given that he was simply a mission specialist, though, it makes me wonder how truly risky he understood the sub to be, and if he was aware, for example, of the viewports not being rated to the depths that they were diving to. It was also interesting to hear him speak about Stockton Rush, as little by little and testimony by testimony, we learn a little more about the man. This latest description being that he was not fanatical about the Titanic, but rather used it as a driving factor to gain customers and further expand or improve his technology. To Ms. Rojas, for example, he was the man who made her dream come true. And so it can be easy to see how mission specialists can have such positive things to say, given their small personal experiences. Anyway, I hope you found this testimony interesting. We have a couple of big names coming up shortly, too. Next is Dave Dyer of the University of Washington Applied Physics Lab, and also Guillermo Sonline, Ocean Gate co-founder in the near future. I know Mr. Dyer featured in David Lockridge's testimony, and I'm really looking forward to finding out what he has to say. So as ever, thank you for clicking on this video, and I'll be back again soon. So until then, bye for now.